This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening and welcome to the August 6, 2025 Southway Hall Township Board of Commissioners meeting. I will call this meeting to order. We have all commissioners present this evening. At this time, I would ask you all to please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to announce that our public township board of commissioners are electronically recorded, filed, and posted. A plate for public access. This time, township manager Tom Pichucci to review our virtual public meetings.
Thank you. The public virtual meeting rules are as follows. Courtesy of the floor for non-agenda items will be at the beginning and end of the agenda. Public comment will be limited to five minutes per speaker. For all listed agenda items, the board president will call for courtesy of the floor prior to the board of commissioners taking action on that specific agenda item. For in-person attendees, please raise your hand to be recognized and move to the podium when directed. You will be asked to state your name and address for the record and may then proceed with asking your question. For those participating virtually, please mute your microphone or telephone to avoid any background noise that may cause interference during the meeting. The chat box feature will be active throughout the meeting. If you have a comment or question, please type your full name and address into the chat box. The staff member monitoring go-to meeting will then unmute your microphone and you will have the opportunity to comment or ask a question at that time. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. I'd also like to announce the board met an executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss legal and personal matters. And item four is courtesy of the floor. This is opportunity for any member of the public to address the board on any non-agenda items. Is there anyone present? Steven? Yes, sir. Please come up to the podium. If you please state your name and address for the record. Thank you. Would you turn the microphone on right in front of you?
Here?
Okay, start again.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, I'm Bernie Schravenger. I live at 4731 Hoffman'sville Road. I've just come to ask for help. Can't seem to get the, when I travel my street, slow down. It's a 35 mile an hour speed limit and they are flying. The only ones, interestingly, that drive are the 18 truckers. Other than that, it's a free-for-all. I was out the other night weed-wacking by the road and somebody zipped by me at about 60 mile an hour. I just need some help. I've gone through the Jefferson Police Department, that's part of the, that does the traffic stuff, and I talked to him about a year and a half ago and I offered my driveway. Just use my driveway. I don't care. Just slow down. And he didn't really do anything. When I went back about six months ago, he said for me to go on your website and fill out some form, which I did. I don't recall what it was, but don't be shocked. Did that. And I don't know if there's anything after that. So I'm just looking for help. That's all.
We did put out the speed timing board and what that did show was the speeds were actually within tolerance. Now, what we can do is put it out again, just to get a tolerance, meaning it was within the threshold, within 85th percentile where it wasn't showing that it was a speeding problem. It's based on the averages and volume of vehicles that were at that time. But what we can do is, like I said, put it out again and just double-check that data.
Okay. Thank you.
What's your address again?
4731 Hoffman'sville.
Also, just for the enforceability factor, because we can't run radar in Pennsylvania, we have to do the VASCAR, it has to be at least 10 miles an hour over for us even to issue some. I'm not saying we can't do enforcement, but just so you know, that's one of the metrics that we look at in addition to the volume.
I'm just wondering, like, you know, we have around other places, like one of those radar pieces that show you coming down the street and saying, hey, your speed limit is, your speed is this, please slow down or whatever.
We have a couple of those.
We have a couple of those?
They're put out temporarily, but I'll...
It's west or east on that street. They are flying.
How about we start with this? I'll stop. We'll get by your house and talk to you. And also, since the last time we collected the data, we do have a more accurate device that does travel, that does account for the vehicles traveling in both directions.
Okay.
And it's actually covert, so it doesn't display it. So we then can get a better understanding of exactly what's transpiring there.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it, Ian.
All right. Thank you.
Email you. You have a card? We'll talk after. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your comments and thank you, chief and township manager for addressing that resident concern. Are there any other members of the public who'd like to address the board? Is there anyone online with a public comment? Very good. Thank you. Moving on to agenda item five, presentation. This evening, we have our 2024 audited financial statements presentation. And I'd like to welcome Megan Thompson from Irvine to the podium.
Good evening. We're back for another year to review the financial statement audit. So the board has in front of you a summary. It's a landscape document. I'm not sure if you have it exactly. Okay, we'll put it up for those who are in the audience. Right. So if we flip to slide two, yeah, what I plan to go over tonight with you is a brief introduction of the standards that we use to conduct the audit, review of our opinion letters, some financial highlights, and some other communications that I'm required to provide as your auditor. We flipped to page three. There were some additional standards that impacted the township's audit for 2024. And it's all clear, the reason why I'm here with you in August instead of June or July, when I'm usually here. So we did conduct our audit under three different standards. Generally accepted accountant or auditing standards is your financial statement audit. That's looking at your numbers. That's just like what we've done in the past several years for the township. Two new standards had to be followed this year because the township's federal grant expenditures exceeded $750,000 in total across multiple grants. When that happens, you need to have an audit under government auditing standards, sometimes called yellow book, as well as uniform grant guidance, called single audit. So what's different there is some additional testing on our end. Under the yellow book procedures, we looked at internal controls over cash disbursements and payroll for a sample of transactions for the township. And under uniform grant guidance, we tested your compliance with the TASSA grant, which is the grant that was used for the Jordan Creek project during 2024. So if you compare the financial statement report this year to prior years, in the back, you're going to see some additional schedules. You're going to see two additional letters that are all in response to these other requirements because of where your federal expenditure level was for 2024. So our responsibility under all three of these is to give you two opinions. One opinion on the financial statements, if they were fairly stated in material respects, and another opinion on your compliance for that TASSA grant, which was the federal grant that we tested. Slide four is just a reminder that the township financial statements do include a blended component unit, meaning the activity for the Southway Hall Township authority is combined into the township report because the board of commissioners is providing the oversight for the authority as you continue to work through that termination process for the authority. And also a reminder that we rely on the work of specialists that are hired by your management team, mostly actuarial analysis that's done for your pension and your other post-employment benefit plans. So all that being said, our opinions for the 2024 year are unmodified. Unmodified is a good thing. That's a clean audit opinion. So you have a clean opinion on the financial statements and also a clean opinion for that federal grant testing that we knew for this year. We look at some of the financial highlights for 2024 for the township. Slide six shows your general fund activity. The middle column of numbers here is the actual results for the township. If you look all the way at the bottom, the township had a surplus of about $2.6 million for 2024. So very positive year financially for your general fund. That's a combination of revenue coming in over budget, mostly in your taxes, like your earned income tax, your amusement tax, things that are a little bit hard to predict, as well as interest earnings exceeding budget as your team has moved some funds into higher interest earning accounts. You also had expenditures that came in under budget, and a lot of that was efforts by your team here to take cost-cutting measures such as using in-house work instead of hiring outside contractors, not filling positions that were open unless they were truly needed and things like that. The next slide shows the tax revenue history for the past five years for the township. I'm going to point out here is your real estate taxes revenue has remained relatively flat with no rate increases. Your earned income tax and business privilege tax have increased over the past three years. We have seen that trend with earned income tax across the 40 municipalities that we audit on average. And that's been a strong revenue stream. And the business privilege tax is in response to the efforts of your team to pursue collection on some of those items. The next slide shows the same trend, but for your general fund expenditures. Again, relatively flat in the different categories, a slight increase in police costs over the past three years. So at the end of 2024, when we look at your fund balance, this chart on page nine shows where the fund balance is compared to what we recommend. So when we look at your fund balance, your general fund, there's two components. There's your internal general fund that you utilize, and you also have a fiscal stability fund. For our purposes, under these financial statements, those funds are combined together. We recommend that you maintain a reserve of about 20% of next year's expenditures in those funds. When we look at your general fund and your fiscal stability fund combined, you're at about 61%. The chart shows the differences there between fiscal stability and general fund, in case you're curious. But with the funds combined, you are in a very healthy position compared to both your fund balance policy and our recommended minimums. Page 10 outlines the township's special revenue funds. These are funds that track revenue that is collected for a specific purpose, and the balances in these funds are restricted for those purposes at the end of the year. The chart on the left shows your ending reserves in those funds, and the chart on the right shows the revenue and expense activities in those funds during 2024. Slide 11 shows the same data for your capital projects fund. Your capital projects fund is funded by transfers over from your general fund as well as grants that the township receives for capital purposes. Very active fund in 2024. You had several grants come through that were used for purchases. Your spending was mostly on the Jordan Creek Greenway, some police vehicles, the sidewalk project, and some public works equipment during 2024. You have an ending reserve in this fund of about 1.8 million that is assigned for future capital expenses that the township incurs. Slide 12 shows the results for your water, sewer, and refuse funds. We call these proprietary funds. They're funds that are operated similar to a business where the intent is that the charges to the residents for the services are adequate to cover the expenses of providing those services. You'll see the orange line here is the surplus in each of those funds for 2024. And then the blue line is your ending reserve in those funds. Now, because these are proprietary funds, your ending reserve or net position consists of what I'll call a spendable portion and kind of non-spendable. So there's a line that's called net investment and capital assets. That's the value of your capital assets. So that's not cash. That's not in a spendable form. That's just the value of visible assets. So when you're looking at what reserve is there to pay future expenses, you want to look at the unrestricted line on these schedules in your statements. Lastly, the township does have several pension funds, three defined benefit pension plans and two defined contributions. So defined benefit means I promise you a certain payment after you retire. Defined contribution means I pay a certain amount into the plan and whatever is in there when you retire is what you get. So the defined benefit plans are part of your reporting entity. They're in your financial statements. The defined contribution plans are not. So the next two slides focus on those defined benefit plans. These trends show the total pension liability of the three different plans. And then the bottom graph shows the net pension liability. So that takes the total pension liability, the anticipated expenses you're going to owe in the future, and subtracts off the assets that are held in trust, your investments in the trust fund. So the bottom chart will fluctuate based on how the market performs. So 2022 was a rough year for the market. That's why you see the net pension liability go up. During 2024, your investments in the pension fund returned about 12%. So you continue to see the net pension liability go down there. We look at the next page, though. This is kind of more meaningful. This is the funded status of your plan. So what percent of that estimated actuarial liability are you holding now in assets? And your plans are all hovering right around the 80% mark. The state doesn't get concerned until you get down around the 60% mark. So by their standards, they would be considered healthy funding of the pension plans. The statement this year is close to 100 pages, so I know it's not really fun reading. We put here on this slide what we consider some of the more important disclosures, in case you're looking for specific information that's going to point you to the right spot. Also, always recommend that you read the management's discussion and analysis. That's at the very front of the statements. That's written by your team out here and is a good summary as to why the financials are what they are for 2024. The next slide is a new schedule. This is a schedule that's a result of the single audit requirements because of your federal spending. So this is a page right out of the financial statements that summarizes the results of our audit. On this schedule, you want all no's and one yes at the bottom. That would be considered an A-plus report card. You do have all no's. You are not considered a low-risk auditee only because you haven't had the single audit done in the past two years because you haven't had to. So even though it says you're not a low-risk auditee, it doesn't mean you're doing anything wrong. It's just the standards and all that means is we have to audit a higher percentage of those federal expenditures. You probably will never be a low-risk auditee because you don't hit the thresholds to require these extra audit procedures every year. We are also required to provide some communications, which we have the communication letter to go out to you. It's a lot of words to tell you that everything went as planned, that we had no difficulties performing the audit, we had no disagreements with your management team. We had a few proposed adjustments, but nothing that would be concerning to me as a board member. A lot are just timing of when information comes in compared to when we start our audit. There was a new audit standard implemented related to compensated absences. Not big numbers for you, but when you're seeing the report, you may see a restatement related to that. The standard is just requiring you to report a liability for any time that's carrying over into a future year that your employees can use or be paid out for. So if you're comparing reports from year to year, that's something new, but nothing else that we have to report to you tonight. So that is all I have unless you have any questions for me.
Megan, thank you for presenting tonight and for the audit, working with our team. First of all, I do want to thank our management, finance team, and all employees for working together to bring in these really wonderful numbers to audit. And I'm very grateful for a clean audit. It's certainly a significant achievement for our township. Last significant achievement was in 2021, where for the first time, completed audits after 10 years. And to read this report, it's just really wonderful. Thankful for our team and our residents are aware of the work that's been done to put us in a positive financial position for our revenue.
I would just add, as always, thank you, Megan, for all you do. And thank you to the finance team. I think hearing that you work well with them, they've given everything you need in trouble, it's not unexpected because they're a great team. It means a lot to know that you can work together. And it's always a great time. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Megan, for your guidance and your help. It's nice to have that continuity because you've seen where we've been and you've seen where we are. So I just wanted to add some comments. Since September 2022, we've secured about 1.8 million grants. And this is all due to improved financial practices. So grateful. Thanks to our management, our finance department, staff. This progress is really testament to their hard work and teamwork that now defines our future.
Yeah, I think this is great, but I think it throws a kind of a challenge out for the township is that you mentioned our real estate taxes have been flat for the past three years, that we really need to look at how we can grow our tax base and try to increase that without, if we increase the tax, the mill, then yeah, it's going to go up. But the challenge is then how can we bring in additional growth, right, to increase our real estate tax. So it's not adding nothing with you. I think it's more of a challenge for the township to try to address that. And I did, you didn't mention it, but I know it's our amusement tax income is doing pretty good. So I'm going to say about a pretty good year.
It's rebounded from the COVID years pretty nicely for you.
Any other comments, Megan? Or any public comments? Anyone online with a comment? Very good. Megan, it's been a pleasure. Thank you so much for your work with the township.
Thank you.
Then the item five B, we have our June 2025 financial review year-to-date report. And I'll ask our director of finance, Tricia Dickert, to review.
Hi. Good evening, commissioners. First, I'd like to thank Tom for doing the financial summary for me over the last few months. Nice to have that little break. So I appreciate. But I'm here tonight for the audit, so I figured, hey, we'll give it a whirl, right? Okay. So the financials were sent out on July 15th. The full financials were sent out on July 15th for the board to review. And as requested, you know, we put forth a summary every month. It just kind of is a smaller picture of a bigger document. You can see revenues and expenses are coming in just about as expected. When I look at last year's percentages, it's pretty much spot on. The general fund revenues, I think last year were about 3.73% higher. That could just be timing of when people are paying their bills. But I, you know, I have no concerns in there that we won't hit the revenues that were forecasted for 2025. The fire tax fund, since that revenue item is mainly the fire tax, and we know that most township real estate tax bills get paid during the discount period through mortgage companies, it's not surprising that we see the lion's share of that fire tax revenue hitting already. But you do still have the gross stage and then the gross plus penalty for the people who would rather just pay that penalty if it gives them a little bit longer until December 31st to pay the bill. So again, we don't see any red flags here on revenues that are coming in. The water and sewer funds are just about as expected. There's no real difference from the May of '25 financials. Refuse, I know we have this conversation often, and we spoke to Megan about it earlier. We'll see a surplus on the refuse side over the course of the next few years. And if you recall, that's because when the new rate was structured, it was structured to last us over the life of the contract. So what we'll see is that surplus kind of fall a little bit every year, which is basically a smoothing of what the rate result was over the life of the contract. Capital numbers, you know, those numbers are difficult. It really is. When do capital projects get started? When do they get finished? When do the bills get paid? When do those inter-fund transfers take place? And then state highway, you can see the revenue. We've already received all of that and the expenses, you know, being six months through the year at 69.34, we're just about right on target. So I leave you with all of that. If you have any questions, I'm happy to, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Tricia. That's a great snapshot of the first six months of our financials, as always. Please thank you and your team for the work that you've done. We appreciate the update. Does the board have any specific comments or questions?
Separate from the year-to-date statements, I would ask the board adopt the audit for '24 via motion. Just to circle back. Yeah, thank you.
Are there any questions or comments on the financials? Is there any public comments? Very good. Tricia, again, thank you. Thank you so much. Going back to presentations, I need a motion to accept the 2024 audited financial statement present. It's the financial statements. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye. When you oppose, motion carries. Five to zero. Before I proceed, I do, would like to propose to add a last-minute addition to the agenda under presentations. I request that we add a presentation to recognize our township manager for earning a credential manager designation. I would move that we amend this agenda to include. Will I make that motion? May I have a second?
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. At this time, I would like to congratulate our township manager, Tom Pichucci, on achieving a significant milestone of earning the International City County Management Association credential manager designation. Meeting the standards of this program is truly an amazing accomplishment that places you among an elite group of just over 40 professionals in the state of Pennsylvania and only 1,300 across the nation. The credential manager designation is a testament to your exceptional leadership, continued education, dedication to public service, and commitment to professional excellence. This achievement reflects not only your personal perseverance, but also a deep commitment to serving the residents of Southway Hall Township with integrity, skill, and vision. We are proud to celebrate this milestone and grateful for your continued positive impact that you bring to our community and to our staff. Congratulations, Tom, on this very well-done job.
Thank you.
Do you have a presentation to present?
Yes. I didn't know you were doing that. Thank you.
Of course you didn't. Moving on to agenda item seven A, ordinances. We have an ordinance of Southway Hall Township. I'm sorry, I skipped the minutes. Agenda item six, meeting minutes from the July 16th. Board of Commissioners meeting has been distributed in advance. I need a motion to approve and author instructions. Second, call in favor?
Aye.
Aye. When you oppose, motion carries. Then item seven A, an ordinance of Southway Hall Township, Lehigh County, Pennsylvania, M&amp;E Part II, General Legislation, Chapter 350, zoning of the codified ordinances to add data center as a new use to Section 350-48D2. Add Section 350-33 to create a planned innovation, research, and technology PERT overlay district and establishing regulations for the PERT district. Add attachment for Appendix D PERT design guidelines. Amend the zoning map to identify the boundary of the PERT overlay district and provide for a repealer, billiard to enforce, not a waiver, severability, and effective date. I'll turn it over to our long-range planner, Chris Stroll, to present.
It's a long ordinance title. Thank you. No official action tonight, but we wanted to just give an update on where we were with the PERT ordinance. We've been talking about this for the past couple of meetings. So since the last meeting, we have sent the draft ordinance to the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission, our regional planning commission, for review later this month. And it is on the agenda for our township planning commission to review next week. Last week, we sent it and reviewed it with the Township's Landscape and Shade Tree Commission, since they'll have a pretty significant role in part of the review. since they'll have a pretty significant role in part of the review of the buffering with the projects in the PERT and the Township's Environmental Advisory Council. So what you'll see in your packet, the PERT ordinance is essentially the same as it was the last time we reviewed it. We've made some minor tweaks to it based off of feedback from the EAC and from the Shade Tree Commission. One of the bigger changes, as I've noted in my memo, is the addition of some lighting standards. The Township staff has been talking about improving our lighting standards across the entire Township zoning ordinance. We just haven't gotten to that yet, so this is a good place to test out what we've been exploring as far as better control and the idea of standards more for the following the Dark Skies Initiative. The other piece of the part of your packet is the zoning map. The Tony and his team at the Pidcock updated the Township zoning map to reflect where the PERT district would be applicable, and that is in the existing industrial or I-zone in the northeastern corner of the township. And what you have up here on the screen are the complimentary design guidelines that are to be used as a visual guide in the standards that are issued in the PERT itself. So you can see that this is a way to help put a picture to all of the boring zoning language that is often difficult and not so fun to read. So the idea here is both for potential applicants and for the approving body and for the public to get a better sense of what these standards in the PERT are intended to help shape and help look like. So these design guidelines are included in, there'll be an appendix to the PERT, and they have also been sent to the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission and to the Township Planning Commission. The, the hope is that, based on the feedback we've been getting so far, there's support for the, the language that's in the ordinance. I thank everyone for their feedback, and we'll be back probably at the next meeting requesting a motion to advertise a public hearing to adopt the ordinance and start the public outreach and the public noticing requirements of that related to the ordinance adoption in that hearing. So no action tonight. Happy to answer any questions if we have them. Otherwise, we'll keep moving forward. Thank you.
Chris, thank you for presenting, and I certainly do want to thank you and Dave and staff for the hard work that you've done in developing design guidelines. The photographs, the designing examples, the visuals are really fantastic. Tell the rest of the story, and I appreciate the work that's been done to make this very readable and understandable to residents. Very good work. I appreciate the buffer zones specifically, preservation of the view sheds, the way that we lay them up, the rail fences and walking paths, really very nicely done.
Thank you. It's, it's been a fun project to work on on, on those aspects of it, and we have an excellent consulting architect who has helped us prepare all the visuals that you see in the design guidelines. And this is certainly a little out of his wheelhouse initially, and he's just done an excellent job in, in kind of bringing our vision to life.
Please pass our gratitude along to the team.
Thank you.
I would just add, I really appreciate all the hard work you guys consultants have put into this. One of the things that I think all municipalities struggle with, a lot of land development issues, is our hands are really tied. On a lot of things, we saw that before twenty, thirty years ago, warehouse in Lehigh. Municipalities being so ill-equipped to, to handle them and the impacts, buffering, environmental impacts that they've, they've certainly had on the community. And with these design guidelines, excellent, there's any problem to take a look at. This will give us several tools in our sort of land use planning toolkit, you know, to, to address these types of future. I would just encourage every municipality to be as proactive as the Community Development Department here. Both of this will make future planners, future members of the planning commission, future members of this board, got a lot easier. They can protect against some of the effects of.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not going to reiterate, but great. The graphics are wonderful. It's so nice to be able to visualize something. I do want to comment on the Landscape and Shade Tree Commission and EAC comments, which I felt were very important about the lighting design. When I'm looking at some of these graphics, and this is just a suggestion, some of these buildings are shown to have, and I know that we have buffer zones, we're looking at wildlife habitats. The EAC brought up the downward lighting, the night sky lighting. I'm wondering if we could also incorporate or strongly encourage like a bird-safe glass so it doesn't interfere with the migratory process, birds especially.
Yes. Thank you for bringing that up, and that, actually, that was something that we discussed a little bit. I don't know if it was actually at the EAC meeting, or, but it was definitely a member of the EAC brought it up ahead of time. Our feedback to that was, as kind of Jacob alluded to, as far as a regulation, we felt that it's, that's an easier conversation to have once we know more about what buildings are being proposed, and that's better handled at the land development process. Because if there's a requirement that is overarching in, across any development that were to be within the PERT, it could prohibit certain design techniques that we want to, we want to encourage something that looks nice. So for example, if we prohibit too much as far as the glass, it might direct someone to try to not put any glass. So we're stuck with just a building. But if we find something safer, the example that's up on, on the screen here, we don't know if we'll get an example like this with a lot of glass, but that's certainly something that in our Community Environmental Impact Review that is part of the PERT, we could comment on that both from the board, the planning commission, and the EAC. And there's certainly a lot of remedies, including bird-safe glass and, and films that you can put on top of that that are easily done, that we can address on a site-by-site level.
Right, you need vertical patterns. I guess if you have a couple inches of port, you have that vertical pattern. So it could be something that's very attractive and address both issues. Thank you.
No, thank you. It's a, yes, I'm glad that you brought it up.
I'm building off of what Monica just said, too, and I forget if this was in, how much it was brought up with the EAC, but also internal lighting, especially if there is a lot of glass, and the impact that that has late at night. We've dealt with similar issue with the self-storage facility on Walbert. Again, we're tied, we weren't able to, to account for that, but that internal lighting, shining across the street.
Yes, I, I'm certainly not a lighting expert. I'm kind of looking at, to Dave, who's seen a lot of, more of our, who's, who's gone down that rabbit hole and when we see land development. So some of the criteria that we put in regarding lighting is to control where that spillover is. So it's usually easier to see where the impacts of lighting could go, and that gives us a little bit more that we can tie some restrictions to, rather than trying to pinpoint exactly what type of materials or what type of lighting that they're using, just to say, don't let it go beyond this point, and it's on the, the architects to figure that out.
That's certainly something that we've been discussing for the future. So we've been discussing how to incorporate that into the lighting standards. And one of the things is to account for all lighting. So signage lighting, interior lighting, should all be accounted for in that lighting plan. Right now, we only regularly park lighting. So figuring out how best to work that into the is kind of the.
Any other board comments?
Well, it's good to see that soon, so we've done, we'll be moving on. Great.
As soon as we can.
Or any public comment on this agenda item? Is there anyone online with a comment?
I'm not seeing anything in the chat.
Very good. There's no action required at this time, so thank you very much for presenting this. And we look forward to the next steps. Then to Item seven B, we have an ordinance of the Township of Southway Hall, County of Lehigh Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, amending Part Two, General Legislation of the Codified Ordinances of Southway Hall Township to provide for a new chapter to establish requirements and related procedures for applications for liquor license transfers located in Southway Hall Township in accordance with the Pennsylvania Liquor Code and providing for a repealer clause, separability clause, and effective date. And Tom, if you please present.
Thank you. The Pennsylvania Liquor Code mandates that municipalities in the Commonwealth consider intermunicipal transfers of liquor licenses when the ratio of existing restaurant liquor licenses and eating place retail dispenser licenses in the receiving municipality equals or exceeds one license per three thousand inhabitants. So in order to provide a structured process for review and to ensure that the relevant associated costs of said transfers are collected, the Township Administration is proposing the addition of Chapter one forty-five to the codified ordinances. So a high-level summary of the key components of the review process are as follows. So there would be set forth application requirements and submission procedures for liquor license transfers, fee structures to cover administrative and procedural costs. We're recommending a seven hundred fifty dollar application fee to be imposed in the scheduled fees, for which there's a separate agenda item tonight under resolutions, as well as the stenographer actual cost reimbursement, which the latter would need to be invoiced to the applicant following receipt from the stenographer. The use of a court reporter to produce the stenographic record is optional. But if the applicant wants to ensure that a stenographic record is produced, that request should be made to the Township Manager. So also, there's a public hearing requirement, advertisement requirements, decision-making criteria set forth in the ordinance, timeline and conditions under which the board will issue approvals or niles in accordance with the Liquor Code. And as indicated, that the public hearing is required and will be scheduled upon receipt of an administrative complete application with notice provided in accordance with the Liquor Code. So this ordinance was advertised in the July sixteenth and seventeenth issue of the Parkland Press newspaper and sent to the Lehigh County Department of Law as required. There's no comments received from the public regarding the proposed ordinance, so I would seek a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Very good. Thank you, Tom. Does the board have any comments or questions on the ordinance or any public comment? I mean, seeing none, do I have a motion to adopt said liquor license transfer ordinance? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. In the opposed, motion carries, five to zero. Then to Item eight A, we have a resolution to amend the fee schedule regarding administrative fees, construction permit fees, special and other permit fees, subdivision or land development fees, non-subdivision or land development fees, alarm fees, police department fees, public works fees, park and recreation fees, and to provide a general repealer, separability clause, and effective date.
Thank you. So annually, the board adopts a fee schedule for the coming year. You accomplished that via Resolution twenty twenty-five twenty, which was adopted during the January fifteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting earlier this year. So since you just adopted ordinance number eleven oh four, an amendment is necessary to the schedule of fees to effectuate the liquor license transfer fees set forth in the ordinance. So the only amendment to this, to the twenty twenty-five fee schedule would be seven hundred fifty dollar liquor license application and then the stenographer fees as, as communicated in the previous agenda item.
Very good. Thank you, Tom. Do you have any comments or questions from the board or any public comment? May I have a motion to adopt said resolution?
Motion.
Motion. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. In the opposed, motion carries, five to zero. Thank you, Tom. Then to Item eight B, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Southway Hall Township, Lehigh County, Pennsylvania, authorizing the Township Manager to execute a winter maintenance agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for certain designated state routes within Southway Hall Township. I'll ask Director of Operations, Herb Benner, to present.
Thank you. What we have in front of you is the renewal process with PENDO to renew the winter maintenance agreement, which will cover plowing and salting of the five state roads, which are Walbert Avenue, Whitehall Avenue, Cedar Brook Road, and Walnut Street. They, in there is the breakdown of the first five-year payments. What they're willing to give you per snow lane mile during the winter is one thousand three hundred twenty-three dollars and forty-six cents. That's to cover the expenses of the salt, the truck, the employee, and everything like that. Just so you do know, they did take into consideration this year the increase in the salt price. We did see it go up last year and that, so in twenty twenty-five, our payment for doing the same five roads was twelve thousand eight hundred thirty-two dollars. And if we renew this in our first year for twenty twenty-six will be fifteen thousand nine hundred thirty-three dollars and forty-six cents. So what we're asking for is a motion to adopt the winter maintenance agreement between Southway Hall Township and PENDO as presented, including authorization for the Township Manager to execute the agreement and any supporting documents necessary to implement its terms.
Thank you, Herb. Does the board have any comments or questions?
Yeah, two percent, Herb. I take it that was given the state said we're going to increase it by two percent, and that was there. That's what they said.
Yes, that's what it is going to be for everyone who opts into these winter maintenance agreements.
Even though costs exceed that, because our our salaries are going to go up greater than two percent, right? So eventually, technically, we could end up losing.
If you look at it that way, yes, you're a hundred percent correct. What we have to remember is these five roads that are in there, four of them have been here.
No, I understand. I'm not, I think my, my concern is the two percent, but if it's, that's what PENDO says, that's all we're going to give you. There's really nothing we can do, is my question.
Correct, yes.
Any other comments or any public comment? Do I have a motion to adopt said resolution? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. In the opposed, motion carries, five to zero. Then to Item eight C, we have a resolution extending the conditional preliminary final approval granted to a major plan entitled Ridge Farm Phase One B. I'll ask Director of Land Development, Dave Mann.
So this is an application to develop the property located at eighteen oh two North Cedar Crest Boulevard. So it's at the intersection, the west side of Cedar Crest, north of Walbert. There are five apartment buildings, each with six units, fourteen two-unit development units that are kind of up the hill a little bit. The road connections are through Yellowstone. There's road improvements, and then there's a temporary signal with Brandywine and access on Cedar Crest are all part of that approval. This was approved in November of twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. They did get an extension, a nine-month extension, October of twenty twenty-four. They're here requesting a six-month extension. We have been working with them to go through some of the plan details. Typically, at this point in the stage, they're working on plan detail, so sometimes I'll send an SSS and kind of go through the conditions. There's not a lot on that admittedly, but most of it is kind of addressing comments and letters at this point. And then once we start getting those, you will start seeing updates to that board. The applicant is here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dave. Before I open it up for further comments, I will ask our Township Engineer, if you have any engineering comments.
Yeah, like Dave said, there was a submission made about a month ago. A lot of the things that we met with the applicant is, you know, in timing with the roadway work, as we know, there's significant roadway work as part of this phase, so they're looking into ways to make it less of a problem for the township. So they're doing that, and their plan comments are very nice.
Very good. Thank you. A little bit up to the board, if there are any comments.
See, yeah, six months, he was all for sure. I was going to say, when you was here last time, we asked him if nine months was going to be enough, and they assured us it was. So you say it's short. Last time, you said, that's plenty of time. So maybe you can clarify some of the gray area. And the other question I have is for, for road improvement, so if they're. for road improvement, so if they're going to try to lessen the impact, it's going to have to be outside of school time. So now would be the time to do it, but obviously, they missed their nine-month mark when they last for the last exemption.
Yeah, I guess they're trying to... The one portion of Cedar Crest is restricted by PENDO for all non-school time. They have to do that during summer, so they're trying to stack up how the roadway will work to minimize the time of the temporary signal.
Sorry. There's more than one reason why that, that more time is required, but we're actively working with the township to work through any of those remaining conditions. There really isn't much, if anything, left at this point. We're just trying to finalize agreements. They really like to start work as early as September pre-security agreement while we're finalizing some of those conditions, but there is this coordination item relative to PENDO and the sequencing of those improvements, which we've actually made some good progress with PENDO on. That's probably the biggest open issue that we're working on. I really do think six, six months will be enough time at this point. You certainly can grant longer if you wish. Nobody's going to have an objection to that.
Very good. Thank you.
I, you know, I don't want you to see you come back, like, you know, you have this plan, and it started, and, you know, according to Tommy said, I understand with the PENDO and all the headaches that brings.
I'll ask Dave Manhardt if you have a recommendation on this.
So my understanding is that they want to get moving as quick as they can. Recording of the document is going to hold up some of that. So adding extra time, I don't think is a hindrance or any downside to that. They're going to proceed and try and get it done as fast as they can. If something holds them up, having that extra time in there, it's always nice to have a little buffer. It's kind of add discretion. We've seen enough of these accenture requests, so we kind of have a feeling that they generally will take longer than we expected.
With that being said, should we consider a nine-month extension, which is what we granted at the last?
Well, yeah, because six months puts you in February. You're not going to do any work in February.
Would you be amenable to a nine-month extension?
Yes.
If I could just add a comment on that, because one C, I believe, was, which is next on the agenda, is proposed for nine months, and I think the idea would be to track those together because we would be rushing on both phases to record it.
Okay.
So if we stagger those in some way, I would prefer.
Very good. Do you have a preference with the two projects? Which one may benefit?
We're currently working with staff on Phase One B.
Okay.
That's the goal, is to break around on that really in September. Phase One C?
This September.
This September, yes.
Be clear.
Yes, absolutely, yes. Phase One C, and part of the reason for a simple delay, Phase One C is the thirty-four twins, the kind of access to the Buckman. That needed some separate permitting, either separate planning module and separate PES permit. That's all been granted. There is a minor amendment we're looking through right now there. So they're hoping actually to start that this year as well, but, you know, again, if there's a border, Phase One B will be...
If we make one nine months, we'd probably have to make it a year because they so much.
Dave, does it make sense from the CD Department's perspective to do a nine-month for B and a twelve-month for C?
It, I think either one, either way. The opportunity to have the recording staggered is certainly appreciated. So Herb just brought up the more PENDO work is required for Phase One B. If One C, they have their planning module and things are in line, One C might be quicker to get recorded than having to wait for PENDO. It's just something else to consider. I don't know, Jason, do you have any?
I can only speak to, I mean, right, absolutely. You know, Phase One C doesn't have PENDO requirements. Phase One B triggers the remainder of those PENDO improvements. While Phase One A was, had its own kind of isolated set of improvements, but once we get into One B, now we're working through... It does have to be sequenced, which is what we're working with the township on, but once that starts, it's going to continue.
So wouldn't One C be easier? So six months for One C, since it sounds like it's easier to go through the processes that end? We're saying, taken care of. Would it make sense to switch the two, X six for One C?
Again, what I've been tasked with from the development K is to, is that they want to move One B forward now and get that started. That's what we're working on. Security for, and there was a minor amendment for Phase One C, which should only take a month or two to take care of. So I would say that, I would still, if you're going to adjust the timeframes, which are now six months for Phase One B and nine months for Phase One C, and you want to make them longer, I would say nine months for Phase One B and a year for Phase One C, if that's more comfortable.
Dave, again, are you amenable to the nine months for B and twelve months for C? Does that work for the?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. And Jennifer, do you have any further comment or tone?
No, that works for me, and that's my preference, simply because, as Jason mentioned, one of the last items for us to accomplish before recording are the legal agreements. So they're always the last, you know, for not to juggling both phases.
Very good. Okay.
You were right with that, Tony.
Very good. For our call for a vote, is there any public comment on this agenda item? Is there anyone online with comments? Do I have a motion to adopt said resolution granting a nine-month extension for Ridge Farm Phase One B? Do we have a motion of second, all in favor? Aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries five to zero. And are there any questions on the One C or have we got a? Any other public comment on One C? I need a motion to adopt said resolution granting a twelve-month extension to Ridge Farm Phase One C. Motion is second, all in favor? Aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Good luck with your project. Then to item eight E, we have a resolution authorizing the disposition of township records in accordance with the Municipal Records Act. I'll ask our Police Chief, Lamardo, to present.
Thank you, Commissioner. So the police department's in the process of purging records as per the retention schedule put forth by the this is the law, Municipal Records Manual, as issued by the Local Government Records Committee of the Pennsylvania Historical and Museum Commission Bureau of the Pennsylvania State Archives. I don't know how they put that on their building. The destruction is going to occur on-site under the continuous watch of a sworn police officer to ensure that they are in fact shredded, as the materials, some of them are sensitive. The date for destruction will be scheduled following resolution adoption. To that end, we're respectfully requesting the adoption of that resolution. I'll just give a brief synopsis of the kinds of records. Right-to-no requests twenty twenty-two and earlier, animal law enforcement records twenty twenty-two and earlier, calibration records twenty twenty and earlier, criminal history investigation files twenty, two thousand and five and earlier, daily activity records twenty twenty-two and earlier, and motor vehicle records, like accident reports, parking tickets, you know, twenty twenty and earlier. So the police department's respectfully requesting adoption of the included resolution for twenty-five boxes containing the above- listed documents.
Thank you, Chief. Does the board have any comments or questions on such an item? Or any public comment? Do I have a motion to adopt said resolution?
Motion.
Motion is second, all in favor? Aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Chief. Then to item eight F, we have approval of two resolutions for the Lehigh County P twenty-five radio project. Tom, if you could present.
Thank you. So as the board will recall, Lehigh County is currently in the process of upgrading its public safety communications network from an analog system to a P twenty-five truncated network system. So this would require all subscribers to ensure that the radio equipment is compliant with the new system. So the county had extended the offer of a county bulk purchasing program to municipalities in order to ease the fiscal burden. So as we've had this agenda item now on for a few times, but we had to put this on hold until we received the required approval from the Department of Community and Economic Development for the debt borrowing. So on July twenty-fourth, the township did receive notification that the ordinance was accepted and all the associated paperwork in the total amount of one million three hundred and thirty thousand, eleven dollars and fifty-one cents. So we can now proceed with adopting the resolutions that would confirm the promissory note security agreement arrangement with the county for the total equipment cost. So just as a reminder, township portions, including all the fire departments, emergency management and administration, that was eight hundred and seventy thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollars and thirty-three cents. And then the four hundred and fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars and eighteen cents with two-way communications, that was for Citronia Ambulance. So Citronia would be responsible for paying that portion back to the township, which is just under ninety, ninety-two thousand dollars a year. And both would be, you know, subject to a five-year repayment plan at zero percent interest. So the township would be paying out two hundred and sixty-six thousand, two dollars and thirty cents per year, of which we would be reimbursed, like I said, just under ninety-two thousand for the Citronia EMS radio equipment. So in the repayment agreement with Citronia EMS, they would be required to accept the radio equipment and repay the township for all costs, including principal fees and administrative expenses, again totaling four hundred and fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars and eighteen cents, broken out over the five-year interest-free repayment period. They would be required to comply with all county program requirements and indemnify the township against liability or financial loss and be bound by the terms of the county's promissory note insecurity agreement, including the repayment schedule and equipment usage terms. So this evening, I'm asking for two resolutions to be approved, one for the promissory note, which would authorize the township to enter into that agreement with the county for the acquisition of the radio hardware totaling one million three hundred and thirty thousand, eleven dollars and fifty-one cents. And then another separate resolution authorizing the repayment agreement and similar promissory notes and security agreements between the township and Citronia EMS, ensuring full reimbursement by Citronia to the township in accordance with the terms of the county's repayment plan. I'd like to thank Solicitor and Director of Legal Affairs, Jennifer Alder, for all the work that was put into getting all of these agreements compiled. It was a lot involved, so thank you.
Thank you, Tom, and thank you, Solicitor Alder, for, we appreciate the work that you've done. Does the board have any comments or questions on this resolution? Is there any public comment? Do I have a motion to adopt said resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a promissory note insecurity agreement and associated documents with the county of Lehigh for participation in the countywide P twenty-five public radio system? Second, motion is second, all in favor? Aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries five to zero. I need a motion to adopt said resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a repayment agreement with Citronia Ambulance related to the countywide P twenty-five public radio system, safety radio system, authorizing the execution of a promissory note and security agreement with Citronia Ambulance related to the countywide P twenty-five public safety radio system. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second, all in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Then to item eight G, we have a resolution appointing David Manhardt, Director of Community Development of South Whitehall Township, as a zoning officer and authorizing the Director of Community Development and Township Manager to engage multiple firms for zoning administration services. I'll ask Director of Community Development, David.
So the township is in need of an officially designated zoning officer. Since our zoning officer has left the township, Tom and I drew straws, so I'm the one that's a zoning officer. We also included in the resolution the ability to authorize us to get outside help. Help with the reviews because we're going to need it. So that's included in there. We've talked with Pittcock and KCE, Keystone Consulting Engineers. We've had preliminary discussions with both. This was kind of a last-minute thing. We had to get it together. So we included what we had in time. So that's kind of what we'll do.
Very good. Thank you, Dave. Thank you for your willingness to serve in this position, and thank you to Pittcock Company for your willingness to assist, as well as Keystone Consulting Engineering. Does the board have any comments or questions on this item? Or any public comment? Do I have a motion to adopt said resolution? Second, all in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Then to item nine A, we have a motion to proceed with the submission of the twenty twenty-five grant application to Pennsylvania Department of Transportation, PENDO, for the transportation alternative set aside TASSA grant regarding the construction of the Jordan Creek Greenway Project, segment thirty-five to forty. I'll ask Long Range Planner, Chris Stroll, to present.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. You can see on the screen the sections of the Jordan Creek Greenway that we've been working on over the past few years. The section in yellow is what was just constructed last year, I believe, or the year before, I'm not sure, with the TASSA grant that was mentioned in the audit statements earlier today. We are requesting a motion to allow the township to apply again for the same grant program for the orange section, which connects the existing sections of the Greenway from Lap Road up to Parkland High School, to the entrance of the high school. At this point, we are just looking to apply for the grant, and the schedule would be, we would know, we would apply in September, and we would know if we received that grant most likely in early February of next year. The maximum grant award is one point five million, which is about what we'd be looking for out of that for the project. The current estimates right now are around that, a little over that. So we'd be applying for as much as we can, but then depending on what is awarded or if it's awarded, we would then come back and look at alternative grant opportunities in the spring. So at this point, it's just moving forward with the potential application through TASSA and continuing with the work that we are doing on the design and engineering and updated final plans.
Very good. Chris, thank you. Thank you for your continued work, you and staff, Dave, on the trail and for pursuing a grant submission for this next portion. Thank you very much. Does the board have any comments or questions? Or any public comment? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to proceed with said motion?
Motion.
Motion is second, all in favor? Aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Then to item nine B, we have a motion to approve request for utilization of fire police for the September twentieth, twenty twenty-five New Tripoli Ninth Annual Fall Bash.
Thank you. So the special fire police law in Title thirty-five requires the Board of Commissioners to approve the use of special fire police when it's not being utilized for an emergency. So we'd seek a motion to approve the use of special fire police in accordance with Title thirty-five for the Ninth Annual Fall Bash event to be held on September twentieth, twenty twenty-five, at the location of the New Tripoli Fire Company.
Thank you, Tom. Are there any comments or questions?
Do we charge for those, or do we cover our costs?
We don't, no. So it's kind of a mutual aid. I mean, if they ever, we ever need them, we do absorb that cost in all honesty.
Any other comments from the board? Any public comment? Do I have a motion to approve said motion? Second, all in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Then to item eight C, we have a motion to approve the purchase of a dual-purpose law enforcement canine, including training and handling in the amount of twenty thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine dollars and thirty-six cents. And Chief Lamardo, would you please present?
So at the next Commissioner's meeting, we'll be recognizing canine Drax for retiring after seven years of service. So to maintain continuity in the program, requesting the purchase of a dual-purpose canine to replace canine Drax. Officer Warnett has been selected. He's about five years of CNRT between Philadelphia Police Department and this one. He'll be attending a twelve-week basic handler course and a ten-week scent detector school. But that does impact our manpower, our staffing issues, so, and the availability of the dog. This will start in twenty-six. To comply with legal requirements and ensure ongoing effectiveness, they'll participate also in sixteen hours of in-service training every month, which is also included in this, in this bid for the training. As the program, like I said, was
As the program, like I said, was budgeted in twenty twenty-five, we'll sign, sign a contract with Penn Vet Working Dog Center, which is in Philadelphia, associated with University of Pennsylvania. So considerations also for training and the proximity, so the officer can go back and forth each day and not have to stay in a hotel and incur that cost, was also part of the selection process. They also have serviced over fifty law enforcement canine teams across Pennsylvania, to mention some Lower Marion, Norristown, Hazelton City, Wilkes-Barre. They're also ACT sixty compliant, meaning that they meet the state guidelines for training for canine teams. And they'll also help us with detailed documentation for accreditation, including monthly training logs and the annual forms for the state training. So the police department is respectfully requesting a motion to approve the purchase of a new canine, the initial narcotics and patrol training for the dog and handler, and mandatory in-service training of two days per month.
Very good, thank you, Chief. Does the board have any comments or questions?
I have a question about the process. I, I support this, but I was just curious about how this works out. Will the, the dog be a puppy? Will it be a dog? Have you picked the breed? Is it a plan litter or all those background?
Yeah, so they've been down there to visit a couple of times, so they were that, the answer is, is it a puppy? Yes, not like new, new puppy, but we get the dog when it has all kinds of preliminary training before we get it. So what we want the dog for will depend. It could be a Belgian Malinois, which we had before, it could be a German Shepherd. It depends on the availability and what we're exactly looking for. For example, they had one available now, but it's not exactly what we need and I don't have the staffing right now to accommodate the training. So we're going to kind of push it back, so we'll have more of a selection, to answer your question, for exactly what we want, exactly the age we need and it'll line up with our staffing, you know, to avoid overtime.
Thank you so much. Any other questions?
Twenty thousand, including salary of the officer to go down for twelve weeks or twenty-two weeks?
No, it does not, but the, once the word got out that we're continuing the program, there are numerous places that might offer to pay for the dog and defray this cost, so it would go into our capital rollback. So I have a meeting tomorrow night with a few people for that very reason, to help.
That was my next, that was my next question. There are agencies out there that provide funding for purchase of a dog, the best food, maintenance of the dog over time.
Yes. Yeah, the, the business network in the surrounding Lehigh Valley have come out in spades. So, hey, we're, we're willing. So I'll do all I can on my part to defray that.
Thank you.
That's fantastic, Chief. Thank you for sharing that information. Any other comments from the board? Any public comment? Do I have a motion to approve said motion?
Motion.
Motion of second on favor.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries five to zero. Chief. Then to item ten, Correspondents and Information Boards and Commissioners, Tom, if you'd please present.
Thank you. So the details of all meetings and events are, are posted on the township website, but Thursday, August seventh, tomorrow, the zoning hearing board meeting is actually canceled. Monday, August eleventh, seven PM, is a Parks and Recreation Board meeting. Wednesday, August thirteenth, ten AM, Civil Service Commission is also canceled. Thursday, August fourteenth, seven PM, is a Planning Commission meeting. Friday, August fifteenth, seven PM, is the second of the summer movie in the Park series to be held at Spring House, West Park, four-three-two-zero Farm Drive, Outon Town, assuming this one's also rated PG or, or, right? Okay. Wednesday, August twentieth, seven PM, Board of Commissioners meeting.
Thank you, Tom. Would you want to go over the scheduling of this?
Yes, so typically when the board needs a workshop or, or schedule for a meeting outside of the normal, the normal time period, you typically go with the second Wednesday of, of a, of a month. Would we want to do that in September or October? Does that work for everyone? If we wanted to schedule the accumulated interview candidates that we've had, we have had, we've had a bevy of applications come in for, for citizen boards, which is greatly appreciated. So, you know, we just wanted to, to schedule those interviews so that we can then, as applicable, appoint if necessary in the beginning of twenty-six.
Very good. I think we just need to show that we don't conflict with the budget workshop at the end of October.
Okay, very good. We'll get that going.
Very good. Before we move on, I want to just take a moment to acknowledge and thank our police department for a very successful police night out event at Coverbridge Park last night. I want to thank Chief Lombardo and also the two officers that I'm aware were involved in the planning, which are Officers Azar and Sariego. Appreciate their efforts. The event was very successful. Large amount of community partners, businesses, first responders and our police department and many staff enjoying a great night to strengthen bonds between our community and our police department. And I just wanted to again thank you and all the officers who both extend our appreciation for.
Yeah, we appreciate that and I, I, this is my first night out with, with this crew, so a couple of times during the night, I just took a minute to kind of absorb what they were doing. And I'll tell you, their uniforms, vehicles, equipment, the way they were interacting with the community, a lot of them brought their families, you know, so that speaks a lot. Somebody said to me, hey, your officers look happy. Yeah, and I said, it has, has to do with the culture, but it's a culture that they've built. You know, just give you one example, the officer that came up here to give me the business card, he's volunteering to work night shifts, two nights for an officer that had a childcare issue to avoid overtime and sick time, and they voluntarily just did that. And they do it all the time. And the sergeants like have instilled that culture in them. So this is just one small example of him doing that. And one other one I'll say is the, the bike officers, you saw so many of them were there through the park. That's because Sergeant Adalizer scheduled a forty-hour class to certify them to coincide with National Night Out, so it was part of their training. So after that, in the heat riding around, they did their night ride, so they got certifications. And today they went to the range, I went to visit them. So they're all pouring into the police department like it's their own. It's, it's something that the command staff built and I'm glad to just be a small part of it. Oh, one last thing, the helicopter that everybody, everybody enjoyed, including myself, no matter how old you are, you're like that, that was a relationship built by our command staff personally with that, with that command, which is the Bravo Company, second one oh four AVN nomads that are stationed right here in Pennsylvania, Indian Town Gap. So that's, that's a pretty cool thing. They're all doing their part. So what you saw last night is reflective of them creating a positive culture in the place.
Fantastic. Thank you so much for that update, Chief. We appreciate it. We have no direction, discussion. Agenda item twelve, courtesy of the floor, again, opportunity for any member of the public to address the board. Does anyone have any comments for the board? Is there anyone online? Very good. Thank you. I need a motion to authorize payment of invoices and disbursements. Second on favor.
Aye.
We have no exact session to schedule. I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion of second, third, fourth.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.